We will call to order the February 10th meeting of Peterstown Township Council. Roll call, Mr. Lauer.
This is Merrill.
President.
Mr. Steigl.
President.
Mr. Arfury.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
President.
Mr. Berquist.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
May I join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance in the name of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item is approval of minutes. The approval of the transcript from the conditional use hearing held on January 27.
So moved.
Second.
I would only note that the council people present are missing me, so it needs to be edited to that.
I think Mr. Cozer's name was spelled wrong.
Yeah, it is, but it's been spelled far worse than that over the years.
But we'll correct it.
Yeah, we'll get it right.
We got to.
Could I just ask a question, Mr. Zug? On page eight of the transcript, which would be what number did it go to? Anyway, line 13 and 14, I was confused. Do you know what that was supposed to mean?
Page eight.
Page eight, lines 13 and 14.
Where are the page numbers on it?
Oh, 13 and 14. 13 and 14?
Page eight, lines 13 and 14.
If we could just show blank, they were showing planning commission and staff of building this 90-plus.
What is the metal metal?
Just show they were showing planning commission and staff of building that is a 90-plus.
Was it a metal metal side?
Yeah, I was confused.
Sheet metal is what that.
That's, I think this was 90% metal.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
90% metal siding, it should be.
I'm sorry, I just, I was.
We'll get that corrected, too.
With the addition of Mr. Lewis being president, any other discussions in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting on January 27.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seven, nothing. Special reports, department annual report.
Tonight, we presented to council a copy of the annual reports. If you get a chance, you can look through those and if people have questions, we can bring them out at the next meeting. You know, I think one of the things that Peterstown Township does that serves the community well is we attempt to be as transparent as possible. So all of those departmental annual reports are posted onto the website and if anyone wants to look, you can see them there. Besides the department heads, I want to thank Tom because Tom's the person who takes the time to chase these all down and create the document, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, just pointing the agenda, his audience comments. If anybody has any comments about items that are not agenda items, you're welcome to speak now. Go in the audience. Seeing none, move on. Unfinished business, there is none. New business. First item is a request for a special permit for an annual Giant Oaks Garden Club class sale and garden market deal.
This is the same special permit that the Giant Oaks Garden Club has been requesting for the last 20 years?
Moved that the special permit be approved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, nothing. Resolution authorizing the destruction of records.
Peterstown Township Council annually authorized the destruction of records. The resolution contained in the docket lists all of the records that are proposed for destruction and that list complies with the municipal records manual that's issued by the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission. So it's my recommendation that council approve resolution 2120, authorizing destruction of municipal records.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question. We don't ever destroy minutes, do we, Mr. Lauer?
No, minutes are a permanent record.
Right, so you can go to the website and get them for a few years back. If someone wanted minutes from prior, would they do a write-to-no request?
They would do a write-to-no request or quite honestly, if you actually wanted to see a historical minutes, you could come into the building and ask and we would be more than willing to share those.
Thank you, I just.
Most of the time, I would hope we could just request rather than write to no. Okay, discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, nothing. Conditional use approval for proposed office warehouse in 430 Venetia Road.
So at our last meeting, we had a public hearing on this conditional use request. 519 Properties LLC is the owner of 1.86 acre parcel of land located at 430 Venetia Road and they're seeking a conditional use for the purpose of developing an office and a warehouse. As was presented at the public hearing, the planning commission had reviewed this and recommended that with slight modification, that the standard set of criteria that applies to office and warehouse developments that is contained in the zoning ordinance be applied here. In addition, they offered for additional conditions which are outlined in the managerial report. And at the public hearing, it was my position that one additional requirement be made, but based upon what was discussed at the hearing, I think perhaps there should be two additional. And one is that all structures have pitched roof that the planning department deems compatible with the surrounding residential development. The other thing that I believe that came out of that public hearing is that the development needs to contain no less than 15 parking spaces. Under our ordinance, the number of parking spaces would be a fraction of that and given the uses that were described, I think you're going to have employees reporting there and they need to have some place to park, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve official use application submitted by 519 Properties LLC for a parcel of land located at 430 Venetia Road, subject to the conditions stated in the conditional use decision opposed by Peterstown Planning Department, together with the two additional conditions that Mr. Lauer just reiterated, dealing with pitched roof and parking spaces.
Second.
Any discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, nothing. Okay, item D, do you want to table that, Mr. Lauer?
Yes, on tonight's agenda was an award of a contract for roadway improvements and lane reconfiguration at the intersection here of East McMurray and Valleyburg Road. We were informed over the weekend that despite the fact that we have approval from the PennDOT Central office in Harrisburg, that this project would be covered by the grant that we had received. District 12 was raised an issue as to whether or not the Greenlight Go grant funds are applicable for the nature of the work that we have proposed. So until we get a letter from PennDOT clarifying what their position is, my recommendation is that we table the award of this contract.
Don't we have to have that done though by like?
Oh, yes, we do and we think we need an answer by the next meeting if we're going to get the project done.
Well, can we just approve it, subject to the condition that you received the proper notice from PennDOT?
And that would be fine.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And that would be for the low bidder there.
Right, for the low bidder.
I just have a question about the low bidder. Does that come through the McMurray Road during the following, the gas line installations? Do we have?
No, no, actually, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't?
No, you're right, Gary. That fasciante does most of the work for Columbia Gas.
Yeah.
Oh, I was thinking, okay.
Yeah.
Flea wanted to take the same project.
So results on that project?
Well, I did put that in my memo. I did mention that, that, you know, they've worked in the township. I mean, generally when they work for the gas company, we've seen some pretty satisfactory results. That one project was not good, but to their credit, they did come back and redo it. They milled it and repaved it, so, you know, in my mind, they were good on that. They're a very capable firm. It's a big construction firm, they do a lot of paving, so personally, I would have no problem awarding them the job.
Okay, so this is subject to approving the?
That it's an authorized expenditure under the grant.
Okay. With that provision, are there any other discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Authorization for change in scope requested by Mac and Engineering with reference to the Lowen Hills Park design. This is a professional service contract.
Yes, this was a, this subject matter was a matter of discussion at our workshop on February 3rd. As you will recall, what this change of scope is, is to provide additional design work associated with creating a parking area that will better service the proposed Pictie Pavilion. So this clearly is outside of the scope of what was the, was described in the request for proposals and what's been contracted with MAC. And it's my recommendation that the appropriate township officials be authorized to execute a change in scope with MAC in the amount of $44,100.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just an observation, I think, for the residents to know that during the workshop, we did discuss the pros and cons of this and the fact that the engineers have had some ample time to look at the property. Hopefully, this isn't going to be the beginning of more changes, but is, based on what we've requested, that we do a different scope, so that's why we're approving it.
And it ultimately would have been part of some future scope.
Right.
But the advantages of doing it now were apparent when they talked about it at our workshop.
Okay, any discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, nothing. Award of contract under CoStarz for purchase installation of cameras in the actual police cars.
So the Peterstown 2020 budget includes an appropriation of $36,243 for the purchase and installation of in-car video system for the police department. The proposed system is replacing equipment that's approximately seven years old. The current, the current year cost of this equipment will be $33,003, so it's slightly less than what's actually been budgeted. I think what needs to be noted, and the budget reflects this, is that one of the services that Axion will be providing is an ongoing warranty, but also the software and updates, as well as cloud stories of all the videos. And that comes with an annual fee of $10,692. That's incorporated into the number for the initial year, but that number will be a fee that will be an operating expense for the next four years, so, beyond this, so.
Is it like that with the others' product system?
No, but it became a problem because the once out of warranty, getting them serviced was next to impossible and it created interruptions in the videotaping. The other thing about this product that I think is noteworthy is that your body cameras are from the same company. And what it allows us to be able to do is to sync videos from the body cameras with the videos from the cars, so that in fact you can actually see things as they're occurring. For no other reason, I think that makes sense to move ahead with this firm.
Could I just ask a question because when we were, when I was reading Mr. Chief Ron's letter, he talked about the fact that this was going to be invented because it was removing data that is stored on the township servers. And at last meeting, we approved a very large project for AEC to expand the amount of servers space we have.
No, what you approved was a backup system that would allow mirror images of our data to be done. We can't do that right now because the amount of materials that are being stored exceed that. So that, that's different than what this is.
Subtly different, okay. That makes a little bit more sense because I was a little confused as to what we were doing with and after we did something else.
Where's this information going to be stored?
It's going to be stored in the cloud and it's.
Where's that?
I don't know where that is.
Somewhere.
It's probably in.
I would note, too, that the chief has spoken very highly of the use that this has been, of which this has been made. It saved an awful lot of potential litigation and discussion and, you know, problems for us, so it's definitely well worth what we're paying for it.
I agree with that, I'm not disputing the need, I'm just trying to clarify.
Their product's been received very well.
Yes, and they support their products well.
Inflected in their stock price.
Okay.
All right, so.
So we, I'll make a motion that we approve the award of a contract to Axon Enterprises under the CoStarz program for the installation and servicing of an in-car video system in the amount of $75,71, along with the five-year warranty period.
I'll second.
Any discussion in favor?
That this expenditure is over the four-year period.
It's actually over the five.
Five-year period.
Yes.
What about if we replace vehicles, huh? Is that an exit?
You move them.
You just move them.
As long as they haven't been eliminated in the reason that you're removing the vehicle.
Okay, any favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very, seven, nothing. Award of contract design services permitting for the Fire Cliff Open Space Bloodplane Restoration.
So as council is aware, the township has an obligation under its MS4 permit to reduce sediment and phosphorus loading in the Brush Run Creek. As part of that MS4 permit, we have committed to over a number of years to doing a project in the creek. This would be the first of those projects. The budget contains an appropriation of $50,000 for the design and permitting services for the Fire Cliff Open Space Bloodplane Restoration Project. The reason why this project was chosen is that we own the land. The land itself and the way the creek runs through it lends itself to this type of project. The proposal that we're recommending is from RES and at a cost of $78,403. It exceeds the amounts in the budget, but both Mr. Zomitis and myself think that we could reduce the amount of money that is, has been appropriated for the maintenance of stormwater ponds and apply that to this so that in fact we stay within the budget for stormwater projects. This is a professional service. RES is not the lowest bidder, but they are uniquely qualified to do this work. They have extensive experience, not only in the design, construction, and maintenance of these type of facilities and we, the other firms that we looked at do not share that experience. And so we think that the best chances for a positive result is going to be to go with RES. I don't know, do you want to add anything to that, Mark?
You know, just a little bit of background, I mean, we went out for proposals in November, end of November, I think on the 27th, we accepted proposals. There's a copy of the RFP. We interviewed, there were eight firms that responded to the proposal. We interviewed the top four in terms of price, the four lowest. We did that in December and January. I have a, you know, write-up that should be in your docket that you can read, you know, regarding each of those interviews. But in a nutshell, I would agree with Mr. Lauer that, you know, it was Mr. Jerosky, myself, and Mr. Lauer in the interviews. You know, each firm had some unique things that they brought to the table, but overall, RES was extremely impressive. I have a little bit of history there in my write-up. I mean, they actually started in Texas, working for the energy industry, large-scale projects that had a lot of environmental impacts. They were hired to do mitigation plans for that. They expanded their horizons a little bit. They came up and, you know, first went into the West Virginia market, now they've entered Pennsylvania. And they've done some projects here for some pretty heavy hitters, including console, PennDOT, Turnpike Commission, Shell Chemical. So they have a very good inroad, it seems, with the Southwest Regional Branch and the DEP. They know all the players involved, they know the permitting guidelines in and out. They brought some unique perspectives in the interview that we really liked. And we just feel that their combination, not only of design and permitting, but they construct these projects as well, and they've done that, you know, throughout Texas and West Virginia and in Pennsylvania. They actually have gotten into the wetland and stream corridor banking industry here. I won't get too into that in this meeting, but in a nutshell, they, they have bigger projects where they've actually partnered with the DEP and they sell wetland credits based on some other giant projects that they've done. So it's, they just clearly have, you know, the capacity and the expertise to do this project and we just feel that it, RES represents the best chance for a successful project.
Does their price include a joint permit? No, sir.
Yes.
So you.
Yeah, so I would like to clarify that, you know, our assumption in our RFP was that this project would need a joint permit, so we discussed that with the four firms that we interviewed and some of them agreed with that. Some of them said, well, you could probably get away with what's called a waiver 16 in this particular instance and it has to do with, you know, you're not doing a project that has negative impacts, like, you know, you're putting in a parking lot or something in a wetland. This is a project that's specifically, you know, that the intent is to enhance existing aquatic resources, so that's the reason they felt this waiver 16 would be applicable. But we did go back to, the two best firms were probably RES and Wallace Panzer in terms of experience. We said, hey, you know, if your assumption of the waiver 16 is not applicable, what's your new price? And RES basically told us that our price isn't going to go up. Wallace Panzer's price increased significantly, so that was kind of, you'll see that on page three of my write-up, it had some garbage there about that.
Yeah, that was the only question I had there. I have experience with Wallace Panzer and Wallace Panzer, they're definitely capable of doing this project.
Yes.
I've never heard of RES and nobody I've talked to today that heard of them either. I'd say the owner is not as concerned, but at that price, did they take a chance?
Yeah, and I will echo your sentiments, so we actually interviewed Wallace Panzer first and we were very impressed by them as well. We thought that of the four firms we interviewed, that those two were definitely our top choices. And with RES being slightly less cost-wise and just their experience with the construction industry and the wetland.
Yeah, see, the thing about RES and this, you know, we have talked before about this idea of design-build. This is an application where design-build might really make sense and one of the things that RES is, is not only a civil engineering firm, they're an instruction firm, and they have the ability to actually construct these wetlands. They, in Eastern Pennsylvania, they, this banking that Mark's talking about, they actually go out and acquire property rights and they, in that one particular case out in York County, they can, they've got property rights for five miles or so stream and did five miles of stream restoration for the idea of banking that as a credit that can be applied elsewhere. So based upon what they have described to us, I think they're more than capable of doing the work.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the professional services contract to RES for the design and permitting services for the Fire Cliff Open Space Bloodplane Restoration Project for an amount, I can see, $78,403.
I'll second.
I'm very, I mean, I guess I just don't like the idea of going to the third bidder when there is such an extreme contrast between the four bidders that you propose.
And normally, Mr. Lewis, I would agree with you, but I wouldn't be comfortable going elsewhere. I think it's important that you have somebody who has experience in this area and has done this type of work. I don't think we can afford to have it not done properly because we're stuck with maintaining and monitoring this for the next five years, once it's done.
And I'm out of my field. I really don't understand what the significance of all of this design effort, I guess the permit effort maybe I can understand, but I think it would be, would be better sort of put the thing back out for bid or recompose the RFP to maybe do it as a design-build option. You propose that as an option out there?
Yeah, I just, we struggle with the design-build. I would, what I'd like to be able to do is to award the contract to these individuals to allow their construction group to be able to bid the construction. It would be a sealed bid, it wouldn't make any difference. And then see what occurs at that point.
What's the timeline that they have for this coming?
We're not under the gun in terms of a hard and fast date. The schedule that is in our minds is, you know, start the project this spring, probably a year for design and permitting through the DEP, and then that would leave us next summer to actually go out to bid and start construction.
Mr. Zomitis, in the scope of the township, would you consider this project small, medium, or large for a future MS4 project?
Well, as Paul said, you know, we're, over the next five or six permit cycles, we're committing to one project each five-year cycle. You know, it's, it's hard to say, but this is probably like an average project.
I was just trying to understand, I think I can appreciate Mr. Lewis's concern, I had a similar concern, but again, I'm not, I have no idea, but if this was a medium-sized project and we tried them, you know, then we would potentially get an idea of what probably performed and whether or not we'd be looking at a similar amount of money.
Right.
For all the ones.
Yes.
How large is their staff locally?
I have it written down somewhere.
Thirty or fifty.
My concern is that the oil we ask is bad, you know, so they have a lot of people that aren't being utilized. So my concern would be if there's a rebuilding of that industry, we could kick it in the park.
Pittsburgh office, they have 40, roughly 40 people, and that's split evenly between their professional services division and their construction division. I think they have a construction yard in 84 PA, if I remember that correctly.
And actually, Gary, I think that that's not going to be an issue because they, one of the things that came out of that discussion with them is they see this MS4 work as a logical extension of what they're doing elsewhere. And I, and they would like to do that in Peterstown because they have some recognition that a project here would actually, our neighbors would notice that. And so I don't think that we need to be worried about them not paying attention to the township.
Is the value of the joint permit that much different, is it $15,000?
Yes.
Yes.
I have no idea, I'm just asking.
Yes.
Who's $15,000 more?
Well, no, I'm saying the difference between the two.
Right, that's right. Yeah, even, even the like incremental difference in the work, $15,000's not outrageous, so. I think RES feels pretty confident about the waiver 16, but, you know, we pressed them pretty hard on that and they said, hey, you know, even if a joint permit's required, a lot of our design work and stuff will be, will be covered and they weren't going to have enough charge for that.
Point's in not to exceed number, so that's the other.
Right.
Okay, anything else? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Any? Five, two. All right, payroll and bills?
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the payroll and bills, finding to be in order in addition to the list that we were given tonight and move to approve them as submitted.
I'll second. Discussion?
One thing I would like to point out, Mr. Lauer, was kind enough to add a report in there related to payroll that shows gross pay as compared to the net pay report that had been presented. And it kind of gives an actual picture of what the actual outlay of payroll is on a regular basis. He indicated it's not an extra work, so.
No, actually, if we're thanking anybody, we're going to thank Mrs. Kleima. She's the one who does the payroll and that's a report that she produces anyhow for her own purposes.
So if council's fine with that, I'd be glad to have that included going forward. So if council's fine with that, I'm going to have that included forward.
Second to the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Correspondence? Okay, anybody want to discuss anything in any of the minutes?
I had two things. One, from EQB, we had a letter in a prior meeting from EQB asking that the township consider investigating solar options, and council didn't really react to that or comment on it. And I was asked, as you know, we have the ad hoc EQB, and do we have a consensus that we would like that to be looked into, or where would we perhaps direct planning or direct, part of the rec department or whoever related to potentially investigating solar panels on the pavilions or buildings, or do we have any direction?
I think Mark should do it. In conjunction with the design development of various buildings that we're talking about, there may be some potential of incorporating, but there's such intermittent use that I don't know that I know enough about how that would come out in the economics.
I think that's part of it. I think that one of the questions is whether there is grant money available and how they could be incorporated without necessarily adding a lot of cost, because we know already how much some of the bill is cost. Is it something that we in general would?
We can do that. I mean, that's not, it's not an issue to take a look, to see whether or not it makes sense.
Why don't we see if there's any grants?
Well, we can do that as well.
If there's grants, then we should get, see what it would cost. Makes sense, let's do it. If it doesn't.
Let us take a look.
So we're reaching out to his design group and see if they have any, anything in their top call or whatever.
I would think they might have some.
They're going to be designing the pavilions with their desk.
One other question I had was on the planning minutes, and it talked about the subdivision of the property along Valley Brook Road, and that was confusing to me. It's the property that we agreed to lease, adjacent to the property that we agreed to lease to Mr. Robinson. And I was under the impression that we were going to get a whole parcel, and so the whole concept of subdivision, pretty much. Can you explain that?
Yeah, I don't know. That plan is going to be coming to council soon. It shows the two-plus acres that Mr. Robinson is going to be carving off of his acreage and dedicating to the township. That was part of the lease agreement that we signed for the.
But Mrs. Hare, I think what you're asking is, you thought it was a separate parcel. Mr. Robinson's property actually wraps around the parcel that we own, and so what we're dividing off is the portion of that property that would be on the Route nineteen side.
Would go all the way to the parking lot at the bridge?
Yeah. In fact, if.
It butts a property on Pelopets that we already own.
Is that, is that property that we're getting, I mean, is it usable? I mean, is it going to expand parking or something?
Well, I think what it's usable for, and we can look at to what extent you could expand parking, but I think it actually drops away from there. The thing that Mark and I have talked about is, for a future project, for an MS4 project, it would be ideal. It would be ideal.
And you made that reference, I remembered that reference. I guess I was, it was just a clarification of whether, I thought we were getting the whole piece of property, and when the subdivision statement came in, I was confused.
He's retaining the property that's on the East McMurray side that he's been mowing and that.
Yeah, my recollection was they denoted that piece, but they never did explain fully. There was an empty subdivision outside. I agree, I recall that too. Same property, though.
Okay, thank you very much for clarifying. One more thing on minutes. Could you please include the shake-off minutes going forward?
Sure.
You used to put those in, and then they haven't been, so people will want them.
They are just such exciting readings. All of you will enjoy them.
I just want to see.
Read them before you go to bed. We're going to buy salt. Under miscellaneous, anything else?
This is the rendering of the building that's being proposed by Mr. Robinson on the site that he's leasing from the township. There's the elevations from each side, and this is kind of the layout of the interior that's based. So, you know, personally, I think this is going to be an attractive addition along Valley Brook Road. It certainly is a lot better to look at than the old shaft that was there that housed the fans for the mine and the overgrown stormwater management pond, so.
Oh, I like the mine housing.
One of the things that I did share with Mr. Lauer and some of the staff was an advertisement related to this, and the only concern I had was that going forward, any changes to the original plan are going to need to come through. And the advertisement was a little vague, or could be misconstrued as far as what was potentially allowed there.
I read that. It says the building can be enlarged, that's a false statement, the building is a certain square footage. There was some false advertising in there.
Okay. Miscellaneous?
Mrs. Merrill had asked me to place on the agenda a request for a meeting with the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority.
Gentlemen, you remember, we did meet in total with them when we were talking about the potential for CMA and the sale of the plant. However, prior to that, Mr. Stevo and I had met with them, just to, our three reps, just to talk to them, ask them how things were going, and just because it is some of a difficult project. Would you all want to attend, or would you be fine with Mr. Stevo and I meeting with our representatives? What would be your projection?
I'm going to be meeting.
Anyone else want to join? I'm sending you to a meeting in the nation.
Your water shit.
That's right, it's my water. Okay, then we'll go ahead and do that. I had another thing. You all probably heard about the proposal from Governor Wolf, and I don't know that the budget's going to go through, but at some point, we might want to talk about the whole state police charge to municipalities. Mr. Bow, I guess you might have seen it, they're talking about four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for Peters Township?
I, for those that might not have looked at it, in the governor's budget, he's proposing charging all municipalities, whether they use state police services or not, charging all municipalities for state police services. Kind of hard to tell whether this is in lieu of stealing it from the turnpike or not, but it's, there's a per-resident rate that is somehow assessed to each township, and I looked through a table that showed much each township in the, well, actually, it showed for every township in the state, but for this area, and it showed whether they use state police services, whether they had a police department, part-time police department or a full-time police department. And I can find no correlation whatsoever between the amount that is being charged on a per-person basis or not. But for example, by this particular table, Peters Township was to be assessed twenty-two dollars and forty-four cents a resident, which meant four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars a year for state police services, and we don't use them.
I was going to say, how many times do I see a police, state police car?
They're going over to the magistrates. The magistrates, well, there used to be one on Robin Hood. But, which makes no sense, because we have one of the finest police departments in the state. By the same token, the city of Washington is assessed, which I think has a higher usage of state police than we do, they're assessed seven dollars and twenty-nine cents a resident. Cecil, eighteen dollars and something. But then you go to Allegheny County and Fox Chapel, which is a relatively similar demographic to us, is assessed two dollars and forty-two cents. So, you know, it makes no particular sense. So I talked to two of our state representatives this afternoon, and they're a bit perplexed by it also, but both of them assured me that they really didn't see any chance whatsoever that this would ever see the light of day. So if anybody is interested, you know, I think we could probably write a letter to our representatives and then.
And what I would suggest is that, because I would agree that it would be inappropriate for Peters Township to be paying for state police services, but I, what I would suggest is that council enact, take action and authorize the chairman of council to write a letter to our state senator and our state representative opposing that.
You need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And we'll just simply tell them that we think it's inappropriate to. But there's no doubt that some of the municipalities are canceled their police departments and are, you know, utilizing the state police service. Well, here's the interesting thing about that. Like, what's Union Township? Well, you have North Franklin Township, which has no police department. They're getting charged seventy-three dollars a citizen, which is three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars a year. They can probably afford a police department, but then you have some places like Deamston, which is getting charged twenty-nine dollars, you know. They don't have a police department. It's down toward Bentleyville. Then you have Donagle and then Butler County, which is getting charged twenty-three dollars. They don't have a police department. But the problem is that these little, some of these little towns that don't have police departments can't afford them anyhow, so they're going to get dinged for all this money, and where are they going to get their money from? And then some towns can't afford them and just have simply said, "Hey, you know, we're spending our money someplace else." So, you know, it's a problem, but they're taking, I think it's over four hundred million dollars a year from, mostly from the turnpike fund, if I understand it.
Yes.
And, you know, I'd like to think when I drive on the turnpike that the tolls that I pay are getting, you know, being used for the care of the turnpike, but that's not true.
That's not true. I know.
You know, there's a lot of things that need to be straightened out in this whole deal, but I think, you know, basically, I think our position is that we would oppose this.
We agree.
Okay. Is there anything else under miscellaneous?
One last thing, and Mr. Bow, I mentioned to talk to Mr. Lauer. One of the residents who had used the glass recycling, they commented, and it's true, because I went there today, that it's a little difficult for people who are vertically challenged to reach the actual, to un-latch the door, which then has to slide.
It is.
And then throw those in, and I don't know what can be done about this or not.
I guess it's probably because of the design, obviously, of the doors, the higher up the door is, the more you can put in.
It's a thirty-three-yard roll, but you know what? Yeah, I guess, but let's find out whether there's a way to handle that.
Because otherwise, if people can't get management on, or it's way down with glass wall.
But we've had no problem attracting people to put glass in there. We're feeling that at a rate that actually concerns me in terms of how many times that thing's being pulled. So the communities have responded to that container being there. It's kind of amazing.
Well, if you can check with your city, that would be.
Maybe they need to turn it, turn it on the hill, so that, you know.
Yeah, well, it's, I mean, it's serving a purpose, it's being used, which is good, so we just need to figure this out.
Well, let's see what we can do.
Okay. Are there items for the next agenda? Everybody have anything?
Well, I just wanted to mention that I called Paul today about traffic issue with Bittersweet and Cerberus, and you're going to look into that and get back to me.
Yes.
I talked to Mr. Perso, he doesn't know anything about a meeting, but.
Ed doesn't know all the meetings he has every day because people surprise him all the time.
But I just wanted to make it on the record, because I told people that I would inquire.
And what's the status?
And if I do not hear from them tomorrow, if you could forward me the name, I will contact them. I will reach out to them.
Okay. What's the status of the Aparchis property?
We're going to talk about that in executive session.
So, you get it right out of there, notify that we have a brief executive session regarding potentially.
Legal matter and a personal matter.
Personal matter. So, if we're in the weather business, you're welcome.